Over a million dollars and that reversion has increased this year. So suffice it to say, we won't get hardly any more state money than we have this year. So we are dependent upon local dollars. And this past year, I'm, what I'm gonna do, Mr. Brelow, is to kinda go through some stuff. Now Angie and I've worked on this a long time. Ballwin met with us this morning and we talked about a lot of these things. And I'd like for everybody to keep in mind that there's been no attempt to unusually go, they're not gonna do that, that's not their responsibility. But the state wiggles out of saying that they cut things when they say, well, we didn't, yeah, we gave you less money, but we didn't tell you what to do with it.
It makes it look bad on them and bad on us.
You didn't have a fine balance, that was one thing.
When the whole reversion thing is, it's a shell game. Here you are, we're gonna take it back, but that never receives a publicity issue. It's like we're living a figure with 25, four, well, we get 24 instead of 25, isn't that fair?
And we're, yeah, right off the bat, we're- The social security retirement.
And you look at the fact that an increase since 2006, how do you expect us with the growing system?
Yep.
How do you expect to be able to-
Okay, so let me kinda-
Thank you for being here, Tom.
Okay, let me kinda get up and talk just a minute. Last year, the county gave us $6,911,000. When the system went to the county commission, they asked for more than that. They asked for, Angie, what was the figure, seven million?
Seven, five, I think.
Seven, about 7.5 million. But that, they didn't honor that request and, and one of the reasons probably was because of the fairly large fund balance that was, that was there. But the other thing that hit us is after the budget was sent to the county commission and after the school board approved the budget, everybody's cool and calm, lo and behold, the state comes back and says, oh, by the way, everybody gets a 1.2% salary increase. Everybody in the system. Okay? That's fine. You just took 1.064 million dollars from us. I don't, we didn't understand, well, we did understand that. What that meant, that we were gonna give 1.2% raise for the people that were on board and we were gonna have to add about 19 teachers to the county payroll because at that point in time, we weren't sending people home, we weren't doing anything. So then, when that occurred, we also had an increase in enrollment. So we had a 1.2% increase in salary. We had a 5% increase in insurance and we had about a 2% increase in, increase in retirement benefit. So we had a 7% increase that hit us the first of, basically, June. July, we get the reversion. We send the money back, we apply that money to the 19 teachers. Then, because of enrollment at the beginning of the year, we ended up hiring an extra TA and about two, I guess, maybe two, three teacher units. I know we hired at I O L, so, so we put about three people back in the budget. High school, a place in there, a couple, one at East Franklin, I think, two out at, out at I O L about. So here we are, starting out, July 1, $550,000 in the hole. And that's, that's, that's there, that's it. Now, we adjusted the previous budget last month, we looked at, Angie and I talked about it, we said, well, you know, maybe if we looked at a 10% increase overall, that we could cover some of this stuff. Obviously, that put us in a position of asking the county for 2.12190199 million dollars, which was a 76% increase. Uh, I don't think that's real, that's not realistic. I mean, it's maybe real, but it's not realistic. So, sharpen the pencils, you see, this one's a little stubborn than the other one. And so then, what we have is we figured, right now, on a 6% health insurance increase, that's a pretty much given. 0.5% on retirement, which is a given. We already had in there about 9.5% for utilities, so that was already in the budget that we gave you earlier. We left that, at that particular thing, because we don't know what the rate increase is gonna be, we know it's gonna increase. Then we brought that 10% salary figure down to 3%. Well, why 3? Is that an arbitrary figure? Yes, but it's somewhat realistic and that's about what it will cost us if we move people up on the salary schedule, bump in the salary schedule. Teacher goes from five years to six years, or four years to five years, or whatever amount of money increases as the state salary step increases. Now, there are many years when, when they didn't give anything at all, but there are many years when, when that's all people got, was just their, their own little bump in their, in their salary. And, you know, somebody may go from a bachelor's degree to a master's, or from something to a doctor, or a specialist. So we thought that 3% might cover that. So now, when we revised that downward, we found a difference of $156,000. So we applied that and we said the new request could be $233,518. Now, that's an assumption that every position that we have in the system will be refunded. Just walk out of here, we walk into next August 26, everything is in place, just like it is now. Well, that'd be great, if that can happen, but it probably doesn't need to happen that way. So here's what we, I say "we" because Angie and Chris and I talked about, you know, I started out with, with cutting them out and we just, just kept on cutting, okay? 11 teacher positions could be absorbed by retirement or not replacing, the interims are in place now. Now, that's a possibility. Now, none of this is in stone for anything. So what's the school board's job? The school board's job is to say, no, we'd rather not cut that, we'd leave it in there. They could adopt a budget that would leave everything in there just like it is and present it to the county. I mean, that's an option. So the 11 teacher positions can be absorbed. Now, how do we do that? Well, we use the state required class load assignment in K to 3, we use 1 to 22 and 4 to 8, and we use 1 to 22 and 9 to 12. We could actually use a 1 to 25 ratio in grades 10 through 12. But I looked at it, that's a reasonable kind of class size. We have any number of classes now that, that are 17, 18, 19. Teacher loads aren't overwhelming at the high school at all. You know, elementary teacher would, would teach as many or more kids than, than a lot of high school teachers do. And that would say that there's probably, if you do it mathematically, coming out of there would be about five teacher reduction at Franklin High School. Not specifying specifically which one, but only looking at the four core subject areas. Right now, our CTE is, is funded by the allotment that CTE allot's from the state. ECE is generally funded by the state dollars, federal dollars that are allotted by the state. So we don't have a lot of local dollars going into the CTE programs and the other programs. If we only allowed teacher assistance for kindergarten, we could eliminate 25 teacher assistant positions. We have 43 in the system now. And so if we eliminated that, that would be 544,000. Well, it's actually not quite that amount because you'd have to pay all their insurance for a year. Anybody you let go, now, if they, you know, they leave on their own, stuff like that, that's different. But if you eliminated those positions from the budget, then the people that are in those positions would be entitled to an insurance payment for a year. So, and that's, would be about $140,000 to do that. Again, that's putting only, that's putting one teacher assistant, per kindergarten teacher, in the, in the system. Look at county office staff and clerical positions. You know, if, if a county office staff position was eliminated, that would take $75,000. If we took the student services assignment at Franklin High School, we had a person that was placed in that position back in August, or no, September, I guess, somewhere around there, September, October.
That was November.
Yeah, it's really November.
We started, we started January.
Right.
Is that graduation?
No. That's a-
Assistant principal.
It's kind of a assist- But, that, that position could be eliminated, or it could be, it could, it could come in as a reassignment. Now, if they were reassigned to that position from a position that is being paid for by something else, you would still recover some money out of that. Now, we have phone allocations that go to directors and other people in the system. I'm not familiar with a lot of that, I do know the money is out there. About 11,000 something dollars, I'd propose to reduce that by 50%. We have principal travel. Principals have a travel allotment, that's about 8, $8,800 or so. If we do, reduce that by 50%, we pay for referees for all the ballgames. If we reduce that by $10,000, the co-curricular, which goes to support non-revenue producing sports, cutting that down to 12,900. Taking the instructional materials that go out to schools. Because we got an increase from the state, I would, I'm saying zero that out. That gives you 78,000 dollars. Administrative supplements, which go to directors, and I guess, principals, or assistant principal. That's money, the county gives us a 2% supplement, which by the way, places us at 102nd out of 115 counties in the state of North Carolina. The average supplement that we get is 808 dollars. Again, that is 102nd. That's not big money. But, that was given for teachers and teacher aides. Well, there was a decision made, I guess a number of years ago, that, that administrators, directors should be paid that supplement also. Well, that's strictly local dollars. In other words, it's not, the county only gives us 400 and something thousand, and that's, and that is only used for teachers and teacher assistants. Then you get over to the administrators and they get it also, but that was a decision that was made independently of the county giving us the money. So we had to foot the bill for that, every dime up. Countywide support, I, I looked at that, what that is would be if someone were to leave in maintenance, we wouldn't replace that position. Countywide custodial, technology, there are a number of positions that we could look at countywide that we probably could recover, about 70,000 dollars. That's, that's a lot of money, I understand that, but when you're talking about benefits and insurance on people's, you, that's about 23% more, Angie, so about 23% of any salary. So if a person's making 50, you'll take 23% of that and it bumps it on up to 63, 64, or 65,000. We could look at reducing the school clerical to 10 or 11 months, let them kinda split up a little bit. Most of our, we have a lot of 12 months clerical people out there now, looking at how that could be reduced. Our staff development budget, that's like 22,600 dollars. That goes, that's where we get our training money, that's where we send our principals, our teachers for workshops, all of that type of stuff, that we send them to over a period of, of time. You know, that's, you don't, you don't have to do that to have school, so I could say you could take 22.6 out of that. Then, the extra pay for 11th and 12th month in terms of athletics, for coaches that we pay the 11th and 12th month for. There's about 15,000 in that particular part. If we eliminate all the middle school athletic programs, which would be the coaching positions and the travel and, and all of the stuff that goes into that, it might not be 50, but it's, but it probably wouldn't miss it very far from that. If we took the national board certif, certification renewals that the system has been paying for, that's 1100 dollars. We have six people in the pipeline this year that, that if we said, no, we're not gonna pay that 1100 dollars for you, if you wanna get recertified, you, you pay it yourself, then that's six people. In all likelihood, if you took that completely out, it would go away forever because it'd be hard to, you know, take these six people and treat them differently than you treat people the next year. It would be treating them differently than treating people before, but we've never been in this budget crunch before. Just the coaching supplements for all the athletics, all of the, all of the programs that pay supplements, whether it's band or whether it's athletics, 20% reduction in that would get us 45,000 dollars. If we charge for driver education training, that would get us 2,500 dollars because we, we're expending money and, and we're not charging for that now. Software, in addition to what we've already cut, if we take the AR programs, which are the Renaissance software and the Study Island, we could recover 61,000 out of that.
And that would be totally taken, that program?
Yeah. We, we purchase steel-toed boots for maintenance and transportation every year. If we were to forego that for at least a year, that would pick up 4,000 dollars. And if you look at making early college, that's costing us in county funds about 100,000 dollars. You wouldn't recover all of that probably because you still have those kids, they would have to be served back at the high school. Union Academy costs us about 100,000 dollars in addition to the, now, we get state grants, we get money. At this money, we get, making early college money, we get about 300,000, but it cost us more than that to operate the, the school. The principal supplements, we have three of those that are going out now to different principals, three different principals. That would be 45,000 dollars if we eliminated that. If we took the New Century Scholars contract that we have issued, and the person is working in that program now, that contract's only about 16.6, but we have some materials and supplies and banquet and stuff like that in there, that would be, that would be about a 20,000 dollar. So if we took every one of those reductions, we would be down to asking the county for And that would be to increase, to increase our budget, the 6, 9, 11 by 157,000. Now, I've had my turn, so.
What would it do to the co-curricular? Tell me what that would do to those programs.
It would, it would mean that those sports that are non-revenue producing sports would have to find ways, and, and I don't know how all of that works, I don't know, for example, if the track team gets new uniforms and warmups and everything every year, then maybe we need to look at that. I don't know that. If the, if the, you know, the basketball team, if they get new warmups and new shoes and, and all of those things every year, then we may have to look at that. But, I mean, basketball's not a good example because it's a revenue sport, but-
And parents pay for a lot of that, I mean, like, they put their own shoes and a lot of that's paid for, I just wonder what that would be.
But it goes to support those, for example, you know, not a lot of people gonna come watch a golf match, or, Chris, not a lot. But, I mean, it costs to have that. Now, we don't buy their clubs by any means, or spikes and stuff like that. But we, you know, we do have, they do have a uniform, they do travel, they do, it costs money to operate that program. And so, but it's a non-revenue, track is a non-revenue sport. We have tennis, it's a non-revenue sport.
Wrestling.
Wrestling is a non-revenue sport, there's, there are all kinds of. Now, we, we do take up money at some of these places and they, and they lose money, I understand that. So those are, that's, you know, it's not pretty. I mean, I can tell you right now, it is the hardest thing I've had to do in 44 years of schoolwork, is to figure out where we are and what would be, and we went through this today, and we honestly tried to look at everything that we're spending county money for, that we don't get money from the state to, to operate. If we only operated on the state dollars, no county in this, unless they've got a big fund balance, could not open the doors. Now, you, I mean, a lot of people have, over the years, I mean, now, that is just, that's, that's this year. That's just to stay zero, that's not creating any fund balance at all. So you get to next year, you've got the increase in cost, I mean, I didn't put it up here, but we were paying 259, I think, last year, at the beginning of the year or something, for fuel, and we're at 379 now. Probably the net, the loads cost $3, I mean, so we're up a dollar and 20 something cents and we, we spent 34,000 dollars last year just on gas for, for white buses, for, for just the activity buses.
And our allotment's only at 279.
Right, so we get an allotment from the state, the, it started at 259, the allotment for the state went up to 279. So you've got nearly a dollar difference for every gallon of gas you buy, even for the yellow buses, that, that's costing us money that the state's not giving us. So we've probably got, I mean, we can't do anything about that because our bus routes haven't changed and our bus numbers haven't changed, and so you spend about the same amount of money on fuel every year. We've tried to do everything we can, topping off tanks right and left, and we just had to order some fuel oil to get us through till the end of the year. This weather ever breaks, maybe we'll be off the boilers a little bit. But, I, you know, I don't know any way, other way to do it than to tell you the truth. And that's the truth. And I guess so help me God, it's verified by Angie and, and looked at, not necessarily wanting to be verified by Chris, because he knows it comes July 1, he's the one that's gonna have to jerk this thing around and, and keep it rolling. And who'll be coming in the, you know, the succeeding years to, to try to help that, to try to, I mean, this needs to happen. This will not affect, I say it wouldn't affect, it will. But when, when you, when you look at the number of teachers that are assigned to the number of students that are there, and I went back through every high school class this past year, first semester, second semester, added all those numbers up of all the teachers there, divided that number by 22, and I came up with a number of teachers that I felt was a fair allotment for Franklin High School. Now, we haven't made those allotments yet because they haven't finished scheduling. And this is not, right now, this would not do away with the AP program or something like that. It might make us look at, you know, not having that class if it didn't have a reasonable number of kids in it, you know, nine, 10, something like that, because you're never gonna get a class of 22. Closest you're gonna come is in your AP calculus, maybe an AP English class, you may get 20 or 22 kids in there, but AP chemistry, just the interest is not there to take it. AP statistics, they're good courses to offer, I don't disagree with that. In fact, I was on the college board committee at one time and I just say, you know, everybody ought to be taking AP. And they really should, if you look at the content and everything else, but, but that's not gonna happen, there, that's not realistic. But that's a good, you wouldn't hurt, and, and the other thing about this, is that we already have these positions gone. I mean, they're either retiring or they're interims, and that means that when they took the job, they understood that they were only to be employed for the length of time that we needed them, whether it was six months or whether it was four months or just till the end of the school year. We're not paying them benefits right now, so there's no expectation of re-employment or should not be for any interim. We don't need to advertise for any positions at this time at all, unless they are from a funding source that's not from the county funding source. But you would not, you would not say to any teacher that is currently teaching in our system, you have to go home if you did, if you only did this. Now, if you put this up to 15, yeah, you would, you would have to then decide among some people, some teaching positions of what you were gonna do with them. But right now, Dan, I think that's pretty close.
Yes, sir.
That, that, you know, with, with retirements that we have sitting on the debts and with the interims that are now in place, you would, you, you would take 470,000 dollars out of that, out of that request because the, you don't, it's hard to start, so you have to pick a starting place. So we picked a starting place, or I picked a starting place of saying, let's just say, what if everything was exactly the same as it is this year? So you gotta have something to work, work backward from. Now, you send 20, we have 43, you keep 18, you send 25 home, yeah, people lose their jobs. I mean, that's plain and simple. Any number of that, because, now, now, we probably have, I don't know exactly how many on the, right now, Dan, retirements are, we don't have any interims, but we, maybe-
Teacher assistants.
Teacher assistants.
Maybe two or three.
Yeah, two or three.
A very small number.
Right, so if we just said, well, we're not gonna replace any of them, right now, we'd only be looking at, I apologize, take those down, for, for two or three. So, you know, we cannot absorb 25, that won't, that won't happen. And we may have a few more that, that do leave, but that's a biggie, that's, and you all know this, anybody that's done with any kind of personnel is 87 something percent of our budget, and Angie said-
About 85.
About 85% of our budget is people. And it's that way everywhere. These other things are not, nothing's in stone at all, but these are just, and I say suggestions, we look, I mean, yeah, we could go back and say, no, we're not gonna pay for any referees. That'd get us, we're paying 50 right now. We could put some more money over there.
And this is you do away with your sports program.
Well, already raised prices at the gate.
Or what I'm saying is basically-
But you can't raise prices at the gate, but I, in my opinion, I don't think that'll bring any more revenue there because you're gonna have less people coming, and that's my opinion.
That's true. That's always-
But then I think that, yeah, and I think that athletics is one of the biggest graduation coaches that you have going on. I think we, if we lose athletics, we're, we're better off losing some of those people that are trying to, are, we have two or three people that are countywide, we know, a graduation coach, recovery things, that are countywide, we're better off to, in my, against, again, it's opinion, to get rid of those people than we are sports because athletics have a tendency to keep kids in school and off drugs. I'm not saying that those people aren't doing a great job too, but I think that, that one outweighs the other.
Well, there's, there's nothing, there's nothing up here that's not good for the system. To keep it all, people would be sweet and happy and-
Yeah, but we have to make choices at some point.
But you gotta make some choices, and, and we can't keep it all, and, well, we could, we could say, well, you know, we go to ask the county commission for 2.03358 million dollars, and if they decide, no, they don't wanna fund that, we're gonna be right back, we're gonna be right back in here.
Yeah, but you're telling, you're telling us those 11 teachers, from what I'm understanding, are not people that have, that are under the impression that they have a job, but again, these are people that you feel like you could be absorbed into the system, that students are still absorbed in the system and still not going over those, nobody that's been long-term, either it's interim or retired. So this is not, I mean, even though, yes, that- Uh, nobody that's been long-term, either it's interim or retired. So, this is not, I mean, even though, yes, that's, that's difficult, but you're still thinking that is not gonna directly affect our ability to teach our kids?
No, because, and now, there may be some, there may be, have to be some reassignments in some areas. Now, and just sort of the raw numbers, there's about five of those positions at the high school, at least two at Macon Middle, two at Mount, at, uh, Mountain View, and overall, about two in the elementary. Although that, that changes from time to time. I mean, you've got, you know, just a couple of classes, Highlands have ten of them. You know, I mean, you know, with two teachers. Well, you know, we have to look at that. I mean, maybe somebody needs to go to a higher grade if, if somebody retires up there, and that's an easy move. And the, the alternative to that is to say, you need to accept a position in a different position or a different teaching position. And, and right now, we're paying for them to take the praxis. And I think that's reasonable that if, you know, if they decide to keep their job to get certified in another area, then we do pay that. What is that, three hundred dollars? Does that depend on the assessment?
See, and that's what we did pretty often.
Can I expand on that just for a second?
Yeah, sure.
And correct me when I make a statement that's not correct. Stephanie, what? I think what Dr. Duncan is saying is, is that there are eleven positions that right now that could be absorbed that we have interim. However, I don't think he's going to disagree when I say this. I don't know that we can sit here and look at those, say, those are the positions that we're gonna allow to attract. Some of those positions, I think, especially in the high school, would have an impact on our level of scholastic achievement. So, what we basically would be doing, where our principal makes a decision, if we want to keep some of those interim positions, other people either have to be assigned or there's other positions that would be lost. So, basically, we're at, if we go that route, you're gonna be looking at whoever our new principal is to make, along with the school board and, and our new superintendent, to decide what positions will be eliminated and what positions will be kept. So, it's not, correct me if I'm wrong, we're not just saying those interims necessarily are all the ones that's going, but those dollar amounts have to be moved up elsewhere, uh, and there's shifts in people around that's-
Yeah.
In, in one department or the other.
But we based, we based the eleven on the fact that we are, I'll just use the word overstamped, okay? Which, which is a kind of a negative thing, but-
Right.
If you look at, if you look at the class sizes that exist, you know, and, and, I mean, there's hardly any class, there's hardly any class, let's say, in a particular department at the high school that's more than eighteen students. I mean, some are six, some are twelve, some are fourteen, this type thing. Uh, and part of that has been, and, and I mean, I'll be honest with you, over a period of time, if you, and I'm, and I'm an outsider, I said, if, if you had taken, let's say, an opportunity, when the enrollment went down, to say, okay, we don't need a position. We don't know what it is, but, but we don't need this position. The enrollment goes down, the person leaves, retires, goes home. Well, you do that over two or three years, you get it in, in, you get it in line. But if you don't do that, and don't do that ever, then it keeps growing and the enrollment keeps going down, and you end up with teachers with sixteen, seventeen students in a class, which is ideal from a personal standpoint, but it's a nightmare from a budget standpoint to keep funding the classes that small when, uh, you know, when, and I know there's some special needs and those kinds of things that are difficult to deal with, but, I mean, for years, I mean, mathematics teachers, English teachers, uh, obviously, we used to deal with a lot more than that, thirty in a class and stuff like that, but the, the, the societal issues are such now that that would be cruel and inhuman to, to ask a teacher to do that. But, you know, twenty-four in a classroom, the, the challenge you have at Franklin High School is the classrooms are small in some ways, uh, and that's true. But, you know, if you just bump those numbers up just a little bit, um, and said, we're gonna average twenty-two, if they do their scheduling and they end up with a class that's an elective class that has eight students in it, I mean-
Dissolve it.
Yeah, from a principal's standpoint, dissolve it. And then go on about your business. That person can pick up another part of, you know, another English section. It, it does limit, it would limit in some ways, maybe some of the electives, not, not all of them certainly. But, um, but those eleven are based upon, Mr. Brilov, you see what I'm saying or not?
Oh, yeah. Oh, you answered my question. I guess what I'm, I didn't do a real good job. Guess what I'm saying? Those particular positions may not necessarily be the ones that we make changes on, the ones that are interim right now. There's gotta be some switching among movement, as you said, change of praxis, or there's other departments possibly you have to look at, the class size, and make those decisions. So, what I'm saying is, not necessarily, like, if we have a, a central position, I'm just using, totally as an example, in English, well, that doesn't mean we're not gonna fill the English position. It means we have to fill the English position and some other department will lose, lose, lose somebody out of that department.
And you look, you look at the numbers, you look, and those will be available to us, Chris, about two weeks, two or three weeks. I mean, they're doing their, their preliminary, and one reason they're doing it is because we are, we're trying to act like we're ready to start school May first with our schedules because of the, the changing of N C Y S, the state is going to another program called Power School, which means that we have to completely change all our database, all the student information, all the scheduling process. You know, we'll be doing electronic report cards from, um, day one kindergarten on up through the twelfth grade and all that next year. Um, and, Mr. Brilov, I guess you, I mean, if, if, for example, we ended up and we went back and re-divided it and said, oh, we don't, we don't need to lose a math teacher.
We can afford to. Some other departments will-
Some other department would have to come off that. Because if, if in fact-
Unless they're willing to change to another department, it's not, but it seems to be willing to undergo the practice.
And your numbers, and your numbers vary.
If we could talk to them.
If, part of our problem is that we're, is that we have no growth, I mean, zero growth, in fact, a decline. And it's just, you know, I just don't think it's good business that if you have the people that you're serving, the number of people that you're serving continues to decline, at some point, you have to bite the bullet and say, we can't serve you at the same level we've been serving you. We've got to put a few more kids in those classes to, um, to, to make it at least, um-
It's a hard choice, like AP classes, perfect example. I think Macon County prides themselves on the level of institutions that our students go to. I'm gonna use this in some of Chapel Hill, boy, go to Chapel Hill. If you don't have AP classes and you apply for Chapel Hill, you're not gonna get in. It's very simple. You're not gonna get in. Other higher levels of education, you're not gonna get in. So, we have, we're faced with some very hard choices. Are those classes you have to go, go away with or, or?
My daughter did to make the course. Well, she did a lot of them.
Right.
But, um, I think she did some of those on virtual, on Carolina Virtual. So, is that a possibility also?
Oh, yeah. You can look at several different things.
I mean, it's looking like what she had in Chris Green. I tell you the truth, it was better when she had that teacher, but I think she did a couple of-
But you're forcing the students to do it that way, Stephanie, if you take the steps we're talking about.
I agree. She did not, she did not-
And I'm not as sure, you won't do as well because you can't, classroom experience is invaluable. You cannot replace that with virtual schools. That's my statement. I'm gonna stick to it until you say go.
Well, and so-
Period. That's how I feel.
And obviously, I mean, you know, the absolute facts are, are that you have to have smaller, just because of the physical number of people that wanna take chemistry in Highlands or that wanna take chemistry in Nantahala, there not gonna be twenty-five of them. It's just not gonna be. I mean, it, at Nantahala, I think in eleventh grades, you got, what, six kids or something like that? I mean, tenth grade, I mean, it's very, very small classes. That's why we keep trying to work on, um-
Getting over coke.
But we do have to have, we have, I mean, like, we only have one science teacher, so we have to offer them science.
Oh, yeah. There's certain, poor grumbling you have to do. I gotta summarize, Dr. Duncan, and then I want you to jump in when I'm, when I'm about to say, and then you tell me what to say.
It's, it's, I'm gonna give it to you all.
All right. So, board members, this is where we're at. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Duncan. Right now, we started out at nine point one oh one. We have found some other things where we're now talking about, rather than having two point one, two million one ninety, we're at two mi, two million thirty-three thousand dollars is what the budget would be, the request to our commissioners, an increase from six thou, six million nine eleven to an additional two million thirty-three, five hundred and eighteen. Is that right?
Not if we cut all that over there.
No, we found, you told, if I understood right, you found the difference of about a hundred fifty-six thousand dollars. Is that correct? What did I miss?
Yes.
Is that right? Angie, you have found, right now, we had talked about, previously, we talked about asking for the increase of two million one hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Right.
Sue Hookrook, and you're in Angie's work, you have found an additional one hundred fifty-six thousand, six eighty-one, that we can decrease that, that request by.
Right. That's-
So, we're now looking at two million thirty-three thousand, five hundred and eighteen. That is our request, board members, to maintain the services and to keep the level we are currently at right now.
Right.
Okay? That's where we're at.
Eight, nine, four, four, five, one, eight.
Right. Right. So, that's the new figure is, hey, that's where we're at, as we have the final budget, if we want to maintain the current level without taking the steps that Dr. Duncan has worked so hard. And thank you, by the way. It wasn't easy to set or do that, without going ahead and making that decision now that that's where we're gonna go. So, our decision at this point, to me, is when we get there, and this is something we'll have to approve, is, um, are we wanting to go forward at that? Ask and then worry about it? Or do we want to take the steps, go ahead and deciding now what things we're gonna cut prior to submission of the budget to the county commissioners? Did I miss something?
Accurately stated.
Thank you. So, that's just where we're at. I mean, here's, here's the goal. Dr. Duncan has given us the path that if we don't get it, that's where we're gonna have to go to, or some version thereof. So, we are at a crossroads where it's time that we'll have to make the decision tonight.
Dave, we have to have, our, the county, uh, would, would like to have, and they, they need to have our budget in their hands, what we're proposing by April first.
Right.
So, you know, do you have to make a decision? Obviously, in, in workshop, this is discussion, talking about it, this type thing. I mean, it would be good if you have some ideas in your mind when we meet tomorrow night with the county commissioners, because they're gonna get, now, essentially, a lot of the same stuff. In other words, uh, they're entitled to know, I mean, it's, it's transparent.
You're gonna present to them this basically same thing we've got on the board, right? They'll have that information?
Yeah.
Okay.
And will it be a, we've got some used technology, Mr. Pearl, will it be?
Well, yeah. No, we won't take that board and take it over there. And that'd be easy if we could put it on. We got a box truck. We don't lose a box truck in all of our cutting, and we could take that, just take that down and unscrew it and go put it up in the Bacon Bank and Trust corporate office for, for an hour or two. No, we, we will commit that to, to a spreadsheet of some description that we can, that we can look at, but, Mr. Brilov, that's, yeah.
Oh, by some right, right. That's our roadmap that you're saying, if we, once we make our decision, we can do some version thereof after our meeting with commissioners, whatever. But if we were to want to do it right now, that's the roadmap that you have to come up with, that we would follow for some version thereof. So-
And that would be eliminating Union Academy and Macon Army?
What part of it? I think that would, is that, I may have missed it. Like, where, where does that bring into the hundred and hundred? Where does that come into your other over here? I missed that. That's the additional thing we talked about, correct?
Well-
Where's that under, where does those numbers would be? What, what did I miss?
That, uh, I wrote it over here, but then I-
Right.
I can take care of that. No, it's, it's over here.
Okay.
And I wrote something, but, uh, and, and this fifteen thousand actually is this right here. So, you know, that's not named, but, but it's all, I think, whenever, when, when Chris would think of something, let's just get rid of it, I'd write it out.
I think what Mr. Brilov's asking is that hundred thousand dollars, and basically what that is, is that if we eliminated Macon Army College, we would save the county about a hundred thousand dollars because we have to absorb other things.
Correct.
But I'm not, I'm not sure, when you start doing that, you're gonna need your teachers back up there 'cause you're gonna, uh, if you did the Union, Union Academy, you're gonna need some resources there to work with those students. You're gonna need, you're talking about two hundred twenty-five to two hundred fifty students that'd be coming back into Franklin High School.
Yeah, well, that's what we're saying. You'd only save about a hundred thousand dollars.
I think the net. What it says, a hundred thousand will be the net, with the teachers you have to pay extra at the high school. Because we get, right now, we get, but your net, the net savings would be about a hundred thousand dollars.
He's already figuring that you'd have to get other teachers in there. After all, everything's said and done, you still save about a hundred thousand.
But I think the law's gonna tell you, you've got to have Union Academy.
I'll be honest with you, that's, I'll go ahead and make that statement right now, as far as, Union Academy's off.
And I'll just say this, even, even with all of this, even with all of it, you're still gonna ask the county-
For a hundred fifty-seven.
For a hundred fifty-seven thousand more dollars than you got this year. And, I mean, and, and I don't think that they're, I don't think they're not expecting that. I mean, I've talked some, I mean, so we, we've got two issues with, with the commission that wants to get us out of these.
We've got six, six nine, and that's what we close here. And that's where we're working off of, Tom. If we assume that we only have that amount to get to where we need to, then we need the two million dollars. If not, if we only have the six point nine, well, those are the things that are at risk right now. To stay within that.
Right. And you just, and I was honestly trying to zero it, but I, I mean, you know, we-
You did, you did a very good job.
We can't close.
Compliment you. I've been through budget things and watched what you've done. Trust me, I'm very impressed, and you have done, you've done, you and Chris both have done a very good job.
Well, Chris, in your little crystal ball, but you, you, um, what's it looking like in, in, who knows, right? Are we gonna eventually quit having to get back to the state? I mean, as taxpayers, we should all be having a, you know, having problems with that. But as the economy gets better, are they gonna quit taking a reversion from us?
Well, as Dr. Duncan and I spoke about today, uh, if we continue to have reversions, at some point, we're not gonna be able to have school.
Right. They're drowning the private schools inside.
Well, see, what's not in this budget, I mean, the state is not, they did not give us, well, we've, we've got to fund, um, what, seventy thousand dollars in, was it virtual school?
It was fifty thousand this past year.
Right. Now, are there some bright spots in something? Well, just a few, a little bit. The reason, the reason that I took seventy-eight thousand dollars away from instructional materials, a money that goes to pencils and paper and libraries and all of that stuff, is the state gave us about a hundred thousand dollar increase in instructional materials. So, you take what you can get. I mean, you know, if we, if, I mean, that's, yes, you need stuff to operate on. But, you know, there's a lot in file cabinets out there, and a lot, there's a lot of materials. So, would, do we want to operate without A R and study outline? If you operate it for a year without it, maybe you do it out forever. Or you may not, I mean, that's, those are hard decisions that, that this board has to make. I mean, if somebody says, no, I think that stays in, well, three to two, it can stay in technically, you know. So, those are some things that have to be discussed.
And I don't know where, because I go to elementary schools, that's where I'm involved more. But we already run out of paper towels and stuff like that. There's none left. They said there's none left. So, you know, I'm, I've already, I, I, don't bother me that much, but I've already bought copy papers. I'm good. And now I'm gonna have to start buying hot paper and paper towels to get a suit. That's what teachers ask me.
You shouldn't, you shouldn't have to, 'cause they've got money to do that. They should have money to do that.
Basically, this is just taking back some of the increase that we're getting, Dr. Duncan, seventy-eight. If I'm, if what he's showing here, correct me if I'm wrong, Mercedes, we've got an increase. So, we basically took that increase and applied it elsewhere. Am I understanding right when you're holding the seventy-eight thousand dollars?
Right. No, if, if you did exactly what we did this year, we'd cut the amount of instructional materials and supplies to the schools.
Correct.
Okay. Now-
But we got an increase coming up.
But we got an increase coming up.
But we just didn't use it for other things.
Net dollar amount probably wouldn't be much less, I wouldn't think, Angie, at all, if any. So, it's just a pot that you're paying it out on is, is the, is the difference, although it, it represents, because it's state dollars coming in, it represents that amount of savings on the county, on the county side of it, the local. I should say county side, well, because it's all the county's money, but it's, it's the current expense, what you call current expense budget from the, from the county. I'd be asked for any other, you know, the question, a lot of those things there have been, um, you know, have been longstanding kinds of things. Some have- Some have not been so longstanding. Nothing's increased since July first, I mean, we just said no every day.
I know, long ago, when Molly was in, on the trade, so we did A R at Highlands, and we funded some of that personally, because I think it was not much. So, is that something that, if they decide to keep that, is it something that P D O can-
Yeah, we, we pitched that at the county level, that you call it just keeper, to buy district license than it was for the schools.
Yeah, because I actually remember, you know, we actually started that and paid for it personally, I think. Well, I know we did.
Yeah, it'll just cost the schools more if they want to, and that's-
Well, and I think the parents, actually, I mean, I know we did, we just paid for it. We just had to put on a few thousand dollars in place, so it's something that could stay if the county takes it.
Yeah, we would have to get rid of our license or district.
Well, I'm not saying that's going to happen, I'm just saying, I just wonder, because I know that's something that you, that I believe that we use on a daily basis, all my daughter uses it every other day or something, so I just wondered if that's something that could be in place, if there was other funds.
Yeah, they would, they would have final funds from P D O or something, by the regular school version.
Could the board please send this information out, when you get it worked out?
We'd have it in our hands tomorrow night.
No, but I hate to have it walk in and be halfway naked. I like to be clothed.
I don't assume Renee, I mean, who would be doing, who would be performing, who would be putting that, would be, who would be putting it together and sending it to us? So, yes, the question is, if we're not asking too much of Renee or someone, if they could do it, it would be good to have it in our hands to walk in, if not, of course-
We, we could get it to you as, as early as we get to work in the morning, get a spreadsheet done, because Angie has it written down, I have it written down, and, and it's just a matter of transferring, of typing it from our notes.
That's what I'm saying.
And, we were, you know, some things we didn't, we didn't look, we didn't look at privatizing custodial services, we wouldn't do that. We, we could, but we didn't, we didn't put that in the mix, we've got enough up here to look at that. And, let's see, that's about the only thing. Oh, we didn't look at, and, but I think it's just good business to look at our uniform, I think the uniform policy's good, it does identify people when they, when they go someplace, that they're on a matter of business, it's a security kind of issue, or custodians and maintenance and transportation people to have that. That does cost us some money, I'm not sure how much.
For all the schools.
Hundred thousand, yeah, for all the schools. And, and certainly, we could did that, I mean, we need to, we, we need to get, if there're competitors out there that supply all of that, then we need to do that. We're going to be asking you tonight for a commission to be able to own the moment, boy in contract. We, we need to do that, we need to do some of those business decisions that, that, you know, that show that we're, that we're trying to operate things a little bit different manner, but, we've got about, you know, I guess, what, twenty minutes, and so, however, I mean, the ideal thing would be for everybody to leave the room, and the boards go up there and cross it off, but that ain't going to happen. I don't think that's going to happen, because this is a public meeting, you know, so-
Well, we just had, it's good to have a game plan, and you've done a very good job, and it's just good to follow, you know, we have to make a decision between now and our board meeting in March, that's where our budget goes, and it comes down to, what are we going to send? Go for me. Just a couple of questions. Angie, how much are we sent back in reversions? How much, how much does that cost us in the last three, four years? This will top your head.
It's been at least a million dollars every year for the last three years.
Ah, being of course.
Yeah, so-
It's, it was one point four three years ago, it was one point oh six, something last year, and this year's about, it's, it's, so it's a little more, it's not as much as it was three years ago, but-
Exactly.
And, and honestly, and, and the board knows this, and some of you are on the board, some of you weren't, we're not on the board. But whenever the, the education stimulus money, regardless of your political affiliation to the EDU jobs money, was only a stopgap measure, and was never intended to be used to perpetuate positions that did not need to be filled, things that did not need to be purchased, contracts that did not need to be written, and all those kind of things. Well, you know, and, that's what created a big fund balance, because those dollars were used over to, to do that. And that's what keyed in this business of, oh, you've got this big fund balance, and so it was reduced and reduced, and then it was totally appropriated out last year. And, and that's, that's where we are, so.
I guess the reason I asked that question, or can I go something like this? I feel like this school system has done a very good job. We could have easily, with the EDU money and all that, the federal funds, we could have very easily taken that, built off of that, and used that for other things, if that one abouts, that makes sense. So, we very easily could have continued to expand, use our fund balance, but instead, we didn't, we used those funds to pay necessary positions, I feel like, and that's the only way we've survived the last two years, was our wise use of those funds. But we kept our fund down to eleven, what? If we had not been responsible, we could have been, we could have been this same shape three years ago. But we did, make a lot of money, as we used to money, where it even come to, and, and we start funding about three point two million dollars, three, three reversions, that's a miracle, we haven't had, I feel proud we did what we did, and we're just thankful, we still have that.
This place has come for three years.
Could you have, I don't think you could have averted a major issue this year, period. The only possible way you might have any, you know, what is it?
Pansax.
I guess what I was saying is-
Everything was getting you nuts, what wonderful people could be, but, you know, that's all.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to say is, we could have been doing, looking at this and this three years ago, and what would the quality of education have been, and we would have placed, we'd have to do that. We didn't, because we were wise stewards of the money that we've had, and we maintained the level we've had to this point. But at some point, with reversions back to the state, you can't continue to do that, and here we are, and that's where we're at. So, I just, we've done a very good job, but unfortunately, we managed to put this off.
Well, they're here.
So-
We're, I mean, we're obviously going to instruct the principals, but they're not going to have. The other little kicker is that will, will come. I mean, nobody says it's going to happen, but, you know, you just have to kind of be prepared. Carol, I think it's seventy-five thousand dollars in Title One, that city in Washington, that's basically what would be our, our portion of a five point three percent cut in, in Title One. And, and, and the kicker for part of that is that, yeah, we could lose seventy-five thousand dollars, you know, Carol being here with this board, working, doing just what we're doing, and, and the bad thing about it is, Title One has to supplement, so you can't supplant, or you can't say, okay, we're going to let these people go. We've got a little extra Title One money, we're going to throw it over there, you know, you do that.
All is the same, it's very much, it's your fault, and you see, and any part of the five point federal funding?
I think it's probably the five point three percent. I mean, the, the biggest part of our money, I guess, is in Title One, isn't it?
I don't know if the fund's got quite the benefit of the sun.
Possible, exactly.
But we're looking from a federal funds, I mean, we could be looking at seventy-five thousand out of E C E, we could be looking at that amount of money, whatever we're paying out of, we're paying some teachers out of Title Two, three teachers out of Title Two money, at least one of those would go, so we're not out of the woods in terms of, of things that can happen.
Even now.
If, if the, if the federal issue, you know, goes on through, and they're talking about the cut, and come pretty quickly, I think, Carol, wouldn't it?